We'll open the Blackstone Millville Regional School District School Committee Meeting for Thursday, May 12th, 6:30 PM at the Hartner Middle School. If you could stand for the public events.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Introduction of members.
Georgia Jarrett, Blackstone.
Jane Reggio, Millville.
Bill Chaplin, Blackstone.
Erin Bonacco, Millville.
Tara Larkin, Millville.
Steve Tringelli, Millville.
Joanne Watson, Blackstone.
Griffin Riley, Student Representative.
Jack Keefe, Student Representative Replacement.
Eric Eisner, Student Representative.
Brittany Dwyer, Student Representative Replacement.
Dave Thompson, Assistant Superintendent.
Alan Himmelberger, Superintendent.
Thank you very much. And our first public forum, we can go back to one if we need to, and our Report of Student Representatives, we definitely want to welcome our new student reps as they've already introduced themselves, but we're excited to hear more about you. We'll start with Griffin or Eric. Whoever wants to go first.
So, um, tonight's the last one, the last lecture. So, we're gonna, we're gonna kick it off with a little senior class review. So, progress reports, progress reports went out earlier in the week. So, the year is winding down for seniors, definitely. We have a busy week coming up, busy two weeks coming up. Our last day is the 20th, and then the following week, we have exams and makeup exams and whatnot. So, some, some seniors are exempt from their exams, some are not. Those take place in the morning from 7:45 to 10:42, and then there's only one exam on Thursday. The following week, we do not have school on Monday because it is Memorial Day, and then Tuesday, we have our class trip to Brownstone Exploration and Discovery Park, which we mentioned earlier. Then on Wednesday, we have graduation rehearsal in the morning in the auditorium, then the senior banquet that night at Crystal Lake in Burriville, which is beautiful golf course, if any of you have ever played there. It's Mr. Ducharme's favorite. Yeah. And then Thursday, the 2nd, we have graduate, graduation rehearsal once again in the auditorium. Then, report cards also go out that day, and seniors will receive their tickets in case it's inside, but we're not going to talk about that because we're just gonna hope it's not. And then finally, on the 2nd, we have our award ceremony, which is in the auditorium at 7:00 PM, and that's mandatory for all seniors. And then the big day, Friday, June 3rd, we started off with our senior breakfast at 8:00 AM, and then graduation rehearsal once again, and then finally, the ceremonies at 6:00 PM, hopefully in front of the school outside, followed by a reception in the courtyard. And then, with that being said, that kind of closes everything up for the seniors. Oh, we also have our parade the day of the 20th, yeah. So, you can catch that in the morning. So, class elections are coming up. It's pretty basic. Each class has new elections each year. There might be a few new elements to the elections this year. I know there is some ideas being thrown around about speeches and other things, but we'll see how that all plays out.
The final Riley rapport. So, this morning, actually, I was able to enjoy the experience. We had a, our team driving simulator truck came back again. It was scheduled for around April, but then there were some problems with sickness of the person who runs it, so he came back for the people he missed. And it's a really cool experience for seniors. It's quite a bit, you're in there for like 15 minutes, 20 minutes, and first you do some practice runs with the driving simulator car, big screen that looks like a windshield, and then you do a practice under texting, where you have to text while driving, and then you do one under the influence, and it's just, it's a really cool experience because it really shows you, because obviously, hopefully no one actually does drive drunk in our school, so it shows them what it would be like if they did, and that there's always severe consequences very soon. And it just gives you some brief quizzes on the penalties and the problems, and it also has you do some surveys, they can get some data. But it was a really cool experience, and every senior I've talked to enjoyed it, and certainly for the better of our community. Our National Honor Society has been busy lately. Just recently, we had our induction, which went very well. We let in a new group of sophomores becoming juniors, and the seniors left for good. But seniors still have a little bit left, because one of our biggest days of the year is tomorrow, actually, which is the ultimate frisbee tournament. It takes up later half of the day, and the four grades duel it out in ultimate frisbee. Very fun experience, and it raises money this year for athletic equipment for kids in Puerto Rico, students in Puerto Rico, so that's really cool. We also had Teacher Appreciation Week this week. Some things that National Honor Society did was bring in bags for the teachers one morning, like their own personal valet service, and we also distributed some like goodie bags, some gifts. I know the teachers were very appreciative, and there was also a breakfast. And we specifically appreciate our lunch ladies this year. We had a special superhero luncheon. We made a big poster for the lunch ladies, we brought them gifts and flowers, and they were very, very thankful, and they said it was a really, really nice thing. It was nice to see their hard work rewarded, and we have the best lunch ladies at our school, so that was a great thing to do. Seems like it was just yesterday it ended with our national championship, but band is already starting again. Practice is actually going on tonight, but they have been for the last week or so. It's never too early to start, and they're really working hard this year. You can expect some great things coming in the fall. Another fun event tomorrow is actually our Jazz Night for the BMR Jazz Band. That starts at 7:00 at the high school. Very cool event, there's gonna be some fun funk music, I know, coming from the high school jazz band, definitely something to look forward to. Our student council is wrapping up the year with what's known affectionately as S5, or Super Senior Spirit Send-Off Session. And that's just a week-long spirit week for the seniors, where they can wear their class shirts from freshman year, sophomore year, junior year, senior year, and lastly, whatever college or military or workforce they're going to on Friday. And we just have some events that week concluding in a Brazilian volleyball tournament, which is always very, very fun, very exciting. And Eric actually has some more notes about the student council.
Yes, so, as you all know, I was the president of the Central District of Massachusetts Association of Student Councils this past year. At our spring conference two Fridays ago, my term came to an end, and there were more elections, and actually, we had a sophomore, Anita, run for the vice presidency. Unfortunately, she didn't get that, but she did get a delegate position on the board. So, once again, BMR has put another student on the regional board, and that's just another awesome thing to show the rest of the school that there is quite a few opportunities offered to them when looking at a bigger picture. And then finally, to finish it off, sports. Those are all in full swing right now, the teams are doing pretty well. I know baseball's doing pretty good, and that's about it. I mean, the other thing we just wanted to say was thank you guys for the past two years. It was a great experience, and we'll miss it.
Yeah, thank you so much for the opportunity to let us come here, okay, talk. I know me and Eric are very proud of our school, so it's cool I have a forum to say that, and also just reflect on what's going on in BMR. And it's just, it's really, it's nice as students to know that you guys not only are just making decisions for the school, but you're taking a personal interest in just the everyday events, the things our organizations are doing. So, we hope we've reported everything you guys needed, and thank you for giving us this opportunity, we really appreciate it, and it's been a pleasure working.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for our two exiting members?
Can you guys just talk about your future? I know where you're going to school, but probably not everyone does.
Um, I'll be attending UMass Lowell Honors College International Business next year.
I'll be going to Duke University, which is actually, it's funny, because I actually opened my acceptance letter on my phone during one of our school committees. So, that's a nice experience I can share with you guys, but I'll be majoring in economics with a concentration in markets and management.
Very exciting. And if you miss us, you know we are available on YouTube. You can watch anytime.
Live stream.
I do that on like a Friday night.
Dorm parties with YouTube. Any other questions for?
Did you guys paint the rock?
We painted the rock originally. I know, I think there might have been some.
At the beginning of the year.
Yeah.
I don't think anybody else has painted it since.
You can find our names on there. Mine's terribly written, I'm no graffiti artist.
That's a good thing.
All right. I don't know if our new reps want to introduce themselves, just tell us what grade you're currently in, and maybe we can give you a little more information on, or I'm sure Eric and Griffin have shared with you what we're looking for each week, but.
My name's Brittany Dwyer, I'm currently a junior at BMR. A few things that I do in school is I'm a class officer, I was previously in National Honor Society. I'm an officer on student council and currently running for president, and I'm a section leader over a marching band.
Great. Thank you.
My name's Jack Keefe, born and raised in Blackstone, member of the junior class, just like Brittany. Gonna be a senior next year, really looking forward to that. Gonna be with the board for the next year, it's really exciting, and then I'm interested in what my experience is gonna be like, and I'm running against Brittany for president.
Okay. All right, so we will hear the results of that at our next meeting.
We'll definitely have the president.
Yeah, there you go.
We'll have at least ones during council process.
Maybe we'll come in and go one more.
When are the elections?
Next Wednesday.
Okay, good luck.
Good luck.
And good luck. And we do have some parting gifts for our, our two longstanding seniors. So, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you so much for the opportunity.
We definitely enjoyed your, your stories and your information each, each meeting.
Except, how many days?
Six days.
Six days.
Well, they each have one more story to give though, don't they? On graduation night, you can hear both of you speaking?
Yes, that is correct.
We will both be speaking.
Both of you.
Yep, yeah. So, be a good one.
Is it written yet?
What was that?
Is it written yet?
No, we're getting there. Drowning, gonna survive AP week first, and then we'll get to that.
All right. Thank you very much, and Brittany and Jack, we definitely look forward to working with you, so. And you are definitely excused at this time, you don't have to stay far away.
It was a pleasure.
Thank you.
Take your name.
Take your name.
In case you forget who you are, you'll be able to look.
Put it on your wall in your college residence hall.
All right, moving on, we have Consent Agenda A, which are warrants, field trip requests, which we have two minutes of meeting for April 28th, which we did receive several days ago. So, were there any amendments or? Still looking for a motion on Consent Agenda A.
Move Consent Agenda A.
Motion made by Jane, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Steve. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, unanimous. And moving on, we have Report of Superintendent.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Bonacco. We have with us this evening Mr. Robert Ferrari from Northeast Water Solutions, and you have his correspondence over the last couple of weeks in your packet, and he's here to give us an update on the situation with the water at Millville Elementary School. So, welcome, Mr. Ferrari.
Good evening, everybody. And thankfully, a lovely evening. The weather was starting to depress me, I think, after a while. But in any event, what I want to do tonight is provide an update for the, for the community as well as the school committee regarding some recent, relatively recent issues with water quality at the Millville Elementary School. You know, a few moments of background, my firm, Northeast Water Solutions, we have been involved performing engineering services since 2006 at the elementary school relative to water quality issues. We were retained as the certified operators for the system on December 1st, 2013. The school, the elementary school has a long history of some water quality problems. When we first got involved in 2006, there was severe lead and copper corrosion problems. You had very high lead, very high copper in particular, and also some exceedances on lead in the water. We implemented the system at that time, and, you know, corrective action, and it's, it's been quite successful, and since that time, this, the water quality relative to lead and copper has been in compliance, more than in compliance, actually, the results are quite good, and I think both the community and, and the state of Massachusetts are quite pleased. In 2010, some new problems arose. The school is served by one well, that well suddenly went offline. It was a failure of the well. The well was completely fouled with, with iron oxide, okay, particulate iron, and went through a rehab program on the well, drilled it deeper, did additional work. It was determined at that time that iron and manganese treatment would be necessary. The iron and manganese levels had gone up from a few years earlier in the range of, say, a half a PPM to one PPM. And by the way, terms I'll use, you'll hear me use PPM or milligrams per liter, you'll also hear me use PPB or parts per billion, or micrograms per liter. A thousand parts per billion is one, is one PPM or one milligram per liter. Iron had, historically here had been, there's iron in the groundwater, because the bedrock is very rich in iron and manganese. You typically had relatively low levels. It began to go up aggressively, which is what caused the problems with the well in 2010, and it was concluded we had to put a, a treatment system in for that. A green sand filtration system was used. That includes, with the pre-oxidized iron and manganese as it goes into the filter, we're using sodium hypochlorite, which is a form of chlorine, okay? When you're feeding chlorine into a system, whether it's for disinfection purposes, or it's for pre-oxidation treatment, say, of iron and manganese, one of the concerns is disinfection byproducts, and there's two groups of disinfection byproducts. One is called haloacetic acids, and the other one is called a total trihalomethane. So, you'll see this, these acronyms, HAA or TTHM, and you'll see that in, in my correspondence, and you'll see that very routinely in regulatory correspondence. Haloacetic acid, just so everybody's completely clear on this, they have been defined as a possible carcinogen if there is long-term consumption of water containing elevated levels of disinfection byproducts, okay? And by long-term, in fact, this is how it's defined by US EPA and the state of Massachusetts, if it's consumed for many years, okay, at elevated levels. There's limit, there's a, there's a limit for haloacetic acids, it's sixty, six, zero parts per billion. The limit for total trihalomethanes is eighty parts per billion. The system has, historically, we've been able to maintain compliance with it. Once that treatment system was installed, it was actually commissioned and brought online in 2011, worked very well, there was no problems with it. Iron was reduced to below detection, manganese was reduced to below detection, just so everybody's aware of this. Iron and manganese are nominally considered secondary contaminants that are removed more for aesthetic reasons, and if you're familiar with iron in the water, the water will look, you know, your fixtures may turn like that reddish-orange, that rust color. Iron can also be black, it can be yellow, it can be brown, it can be a range of colors. It physically fouls equipment. We had to clean out a lot of the equipment. For example, you have a fire service pump in the mechanical room at the elementary school, and the pipe leading to that pump had been silted into the point where it was about, it was down to about two inches in diameter, as opposed to the, the eight or 10 inches it was supposed to be, and frankly, if it, if there had ever been a fire at the school at that point in time, it is highly unlikely that you would have been able to achieve the fire flow. But that was all cleaned out and, and rectified. In any event, there were pro, in 2012 and into 2013, there were some problems. The system was not being operated optimally, and DEP, MSEP got involved again, and around August of 2013, the town requested that my firm get involved again. We did an evaluation, identified some necessary corrective action, which frankly, was operational. We were retained on December 1st, 2013, and the system was back in compliance one hour after we initiated our services. We had to adjust the chemical feed, make a few other minor controls adjustments, and the system came back into compliance relative to iron and manganese compliance, and there had, to that point in time, there hadn't been any issues on disinfection byproducts. System has been operating well. Two other improvements were made in the, in the intervening year and a half approximately. In March, February and March of 2014, we basically refurbished the green sand filtration system to be sure that it was operating optimally, and in the summer of 2014, we implemented a remote monitoring system. And what that entails is we monitor certain critical parameters in the treatment system, and they're monitored both on a local control panel at the treatment, in the treatment room, and also back at our office, and we monitor 24/7/365, okay? And we have automatic, not just monitoring, but alarming and notifications if there's a problem. We don't have to wait for someone at the school to call us. We, we, we may find out about it, at whatever time it occurs, we will be notified, and, and at that point, we have to have access to the school, and then we've notified the appropriate person to give us access to the school. There really hasn't been any significant alarms occurring, quite frankly. But we do monitor, for instance, how much water you use, the level in the storage tanks, the chlorine residual coming out of the green sand filters, and other key parameters, and we're doing that 24/7. What had occurred is in February, we were doing a routine quarterly monitoring of disinfection byproducts. That's required by the state of Massachusetts, as well as by US EPA. It's, it's a routine monitoring event, happens four times a year. And we, actually, let me step back. One of the things that my firm does, I insist on this, by the way, is that we consider the monitoring requirements defined by the state or by US EPA as the minimum level of monitoring required. That's what's required for regulatory compliance. We do additional monitoring as we believe is necessary for proper operation and control of the system. So, we, we do more than that minimum, and we think that's important, because we have to have a database that allows us to, to determine at all times how the system is operating, and if it's operating correctly, and if not, we have to come, we have to correct the problem immediately. We took samples, I believe it was February 10th, 2016, results reported back a week or two later, and we, we identified that disinfection byproducts were high, okay? The total trihalomethanes were, I believe, about ninety-one parts per billion, and the haloacetic acids were approximately a hundred and twenty parts per billion. That caused the average value, we have to look at a four-quarter rolling average, exceeded the, the concentration limits for those, for those two families of contaminants. Upon a notification by the laboratory, and they actually notified us before they issued the analytical report. Again, one of the protocols we have in place is that if the laboratory identifies any out-of-compliance parameter, whether it's at Millville or any other, of the other facilities that we operate the public water systems, they notify us as soon as they become aware of it, so we can take immediate corrective action. We dispatched our lead operator, his name is Glenn Alby, he's been working up here, well, he's been involved here since 2006, but he's been the lead certified operator since December 1st, 2013, and Glenn is very well-versed with the school and the system and personnel. Glenn immediately came to the school. We'd consulted, as soon as we got the notification, we determined a corrective action was to adjust the chlorine chemical feed rate, and, and from that, we had to start doing follow-up monitoring. Now, a little more information here, the reason the problem occurred is because if you, I said earlier, ten, fifteen years ago, you had about point five to one part per million of iron in the water. In 2010, you had seven, eight, nine, 10 parts per million of iron in the water. This past winter, we saw as high as thirty-one parts per million of iron in the water, okay? Manganese has been fairly consistent. It typically is between about point eight and about 1.8 parts per million. It's always stayed in that range regardless of whatever the iron level is. The problem is that is the iron level, it's one thing for it to go up, say, for a day and come back down, but it went up and stayed up. We were getting values like seventeen, and twenty, and thirty-one, and twenty-four. We had to adjust our chemical feed rate because with the increased loading, we, we need more oxygen to go in, more, more sodium hypochlorite. We make small adjustments with it, with the chemical feed pump. We dialed it back, we knew that brought the levels back down, because we are monitoring the chlorine residual. We have a chlorine residual monitor, it's an automatic instrument, and it, and is, is when, whenever the water is flowing through that system, we are monitoring the chlorine residual automatically, and we get that value back in our office where we data log it, and we, and we use it for trend analysis. And we have alarm functions on there, and we were getting, so at that point, we could tell then, once we adjusted the chlorine dosage back down, the, the residual level went down. Disinfection byproducts are a function of two critical variables and one secondary variable. The two critical variables are, what is the level, how much chlorine, what they call residual, is left in the water after the filtration process, and the second one is the hydraulic retention time or the detention time in the system. The third variable, which is somewhat secondary, is, is how much natural organic matter is in the water, and we monitor that by measuring what they call total organic carbon, okay? Now, we have to maintain a low chlorine residual in the water coming out of the filters, that's how we control the filter operation. We try to keep it at less than point five milligrams per liter or PPM. It had gotten up there. It, it actually had, for a few days, it hit like, you know, point eight, point nine, one, because what was happening is, we were seeing this variable iron load coming in, so we had a little excess coming out. It doesn't mean that we had high disinfection byproducts, because the second critical variable is hydraulic retention time. We have monitored this system extensively, and we know that if we keep the hydraulic retention time of the water in the system at less than five days, we don't have a disinfection byproducts problem. Some of these reactions to create disinfection byproducts take a long time, they take days to occur. So, we lose both variables. We had a confluence of, of events occur, and we analyzed the data, and what we determined was that at the point we had that very high level of disinfection byproducts, the oldest water in the system had been in the system for about seven days. The reason that occurred is because the sampling was done on a Wednesday. No water pumped on Saturday and Sunday, which is not unusual, because there was nobody in the school. But there was also no water pumping on Friday or Monday, so we had water from the previous Wednesday and Thursday was still in the system. You know, it gets pumped into the storage tank, it gets treated and pumped into the storage tank, and then it gets pumped into the school. So, we had water from as far back as the previous Wednesday or Thursday, and we can determine that because we have all this monitoring data. There's a reason we have the monitoring data, and we, and if you know how to use it, you can then troubleshoot, or you can prevent problems from occurring. So, that's the real reason. Now, we have done, subsequent to that, we made adjustments in the controls, on the operational controls. We came back and sampled again in March, and the total trihalomethanes, the TTHMs, were back in compliance again. The haloacetic acids were slightly high, they were about sixty-three or sixty-four parts per billion, so they were high by about three to four billionths, okay? Three to four, you know, parts per billion, or, or micrograms per liter. We, I had Glenn make further adjustments, just to be on the safe side, and the other adjustment we really made was, we reduced the control elevation in your storage tank, because the storage tank is what really defines the hydraulic retention time. The tank is 10,000 gallons, and the reason it was sized for 10,000 gallons is it's based upon the maximum school population, their projected water use with two days capacity in the storage tank. So, if the well, you lost the well, we could operate for at least two days before, you know, we were completely out of water. At that point, you either call a tank truck in, or you, you get your well repaired. We, we need to have some cushion there. The school, the school has been typically using between 1,500 and 2,000 gallons a day during its normal operating school year. In the summertime, you're averaging about 500 gallons a day, so we'd been, we had originally set the control elevation at 8,000 gallons, we dropped it down to about, to 7,000 and to 6,000. What we've now done is it's down to 5,000 gallons. You probably have about two to two and a half days of water in, in the storage tank. And by having a maximum of about two and a half days average detention time in the tank, even if we have a weekend when no water is being pumped, that'll get us about four and a half days of maximum hydraulic retention time. We know if we keep you below about five days total, you know, time in the, in the system, hydraulic time in the system, we'll be okay on disinfection byproducts. We just sampled again on Friday, I got the results yesterday. In addition to monitoring disinfection byproducts at our two locations in distribution, we did a complete survey across the system, you know, the well, after the green sand filters, after the storage tank, and then two locations in distribution. We also monitored total organic carbon and some other parameters. We also monitored total organic carbon and some other parameters. The system is running excellently. Disinfection byproducts were, if I recall correctly, that's in the memo, by the way, that you got, I believe, and I think total trihalomethanes are in the 40s, and halocytic acids, I believe, were in the 30s, if I remember correctly. Alan, did I say that right?
Got it.
Okay.
Yep.
And in fact, we're going to keep working, we want to get those lower if we can. I mean, there's always going to be a little bit in the system, because there's no way around that. You know, if you're using hypochlorite, or chlorine, which we need to use, you know, that's, you're going to have a little bit. But again, anybody, any system that has chlorinated water, you know, uses chlorine or different versions of hypochlorite as a disinfection, you have to be concerned about disinfection byproducts. A couple other points to make, we are, this enabled us to do another complete evaluation of the system. We have made all the submittals to DEP. I do want to assure everyone, A, we believe in total transparency, we hide nothing, you know, we don't believe, you know, what you don't know won't hurt you, we tell you everything. We report monthly to the Mass DEP, we file quarterly reports, annual reports, we report to the school district, we report to the town of Millville, okay? And by the way, anytime you want to hear from me, I'll be glad to show up, all right? But we do, if you're wondering, this last memo is memo number 63, okay? So we do keep track of things and report. So I'm pleased to report that, and by the way, in looking back at the data, we believe this was probably a very isolated incident, because if you look at historically, what the chlorine residual was in the filter effluent that goes into the system, and if you look at the hydraulic retention time, which we have analyzed by looking at our, the data from the remote monitoring system, we were typically around three, four, or five days, you know, maximum hydraulic retention time with a moderate residual. So I want to assure folks, and if you want me to do a more detailed or extensive analysis, I'm only going to go back through, you know, almost two years of data and give you a day-by-day, month-by-month analysis, if you want it, I'll do it, to demonstrate that. But we feel quite confident that the combination of the low residual and the low hydraulic retention time, that this was, there's no question in my mind that we had a fairly isolated incident there. One other thing, one of the concerns that Mass DEP had, they had one of their inspectors come down back in April, his name was Bob Hoyt, excellent guy, very smart, very good operator, we had a really good discussion on site, and he raised a concern about how much total organic carbon was in the system, because that's an indication of natural organic matter. It's the breakdown of natural organic matter by chlorine that can create disinfection byproducts. We actually had levels as high as 9 or 10 parts per million back in 2009, and 10, and 11. The, this latest round, we had 3.4 parts per million in the raw water coming in from the well, and it was only reduced to 2.1, I think 2.3, in the storage tank, and it held that through the system. So there was a fairly low level of total organic carbon. What I've advised the state is that I'm going to add the total organic carbon to our routine quarterly monitoring, just because I want to know, okay? You know, it's nice, it's nice that it's low, but I want to make sure it wasn't, realistically speaking, if it was going to be high, it probably would have been high in the spring, because that's when you have a lot of, you know, meltwater, rainwater, floodwaters, et cetera, which can get into the well. But we'll look at it over the four quarters, the four seasonal quarters. There's one other thing to point out. In this last memo, I've made the recommendation to Mass DEP that we change the third quarter monitoring from roughly mid-August to September, and the reason is because the school is nominally not occupied, you know, in August. I mean, you've got, you've got the maintenance staff there, some water's being used. We actually install automatic flushing devices, because we've got to pull water through the system, both for corrosion control purposes and to prevent this problem. We actually were a little high in the August sampling, because we had a very long hydraulic retention time, because no water was being used in the system. Now, we dropped the level in the storage tank down about 1,500 gallons in the summer. We've suggested to them that we'd like, we'd like to monitor in September, about the third week of September. We think that'd be more representative of when the school population is there and it's in active use. I don't know what their response is going to be, we'll find out. If they tell us to keep it in August, I may come back and tell the town of Millville, and the school committee, we'll do it in August to meet the regulatory compliance, but I still want to do it in September, because I think it'd be the appropriate thing to do. We've actually been having this debate verbally with them for about, you know, about a year and a half, and it had only been verbal, I now put it, I put it in writing now, because I just think it'd be appropriate. I want to assure the community, and I want to assure the school committee, we take this very seriously. I didn't need Flint, Michigan to take this seriously. We operate the water system, we operate over 70 public water systems, including quite a few schools in Massachusetts and Rhode Island and Connecticut, and we pride ourselves on protecting public health. That's our, that's our job. And if anybody's wondering, on my credentials and qualifications, I am a registered professional engineer, and I am a certified operator. I'm registered in about 18 states, and I'm certified as an operator in Massachusetts, Rhode Island, and Connecticut. And we're in the business of public health, and if we screw up, I'm out of business, so we don't want to screw up, you know, speaking plainly. And I'm welcome to any questions, and I'm also, you know, also say, as I said before, or just to repeat myself, anytime you want to, want to represent, want me to represent what's going on, or I'll tell you, give you an update, all you have to do is ask. Alan's got me on speed dial, so he knows how to find me pretty quickly.
Thank you very much, Bob, and I just wanted to let folks watching, and certainly the committee has seen, I don't know about you guys, but I feel like I just audited the first two graduate courses in chemical engineering. Bob and Glenn, who we mentioned as the lead operator, are as competent professionals in this business as there are working today. And when he says, "We know everything," we know everything. And once you get used to the acronyms, you can almost follow along with what he's been saying. So I thank you for being here, and he is right, Bob is right. He's very accessible, he has done great work to make sure that the public health is consistent and it's monitored, and they have that always in the forefront. The other thing to notice is the 60 parts per billion that Mr. Ferrari mentioned, we were at 63. Before DEP gets involved, NWSI said, "We're too high." It's very small, but the number is the number. And so I think that that speaks and says everything about the company and the work that you're doing, so thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
I thought it was a great presentation, I mean, the two things that stuck out for me were that you, you know, you have a ton of data that you monitor, and the best thing that I heard was that you do more than the minimum, so I'd like to see that in a lot of areas in Millville, more than the minimum. That was a dig, not, that was a dig at the town, not you.
And I am glad to hear about the flushing piece in the summer, because I wondered, why wouldn't the same thing happen over in the summer? The only comment that I will make in general, and I don't, it actually has nothing to do with your firm or the department, but the memo that came out to parents with students in the school in Millville was very disconcerting, because it was in a language we don't, we don't understand, with no little descriptors, kind of just, "We have to share this, so here it is." And I think in the future, if we could have had maybe some of your words, or words from the school, or whatever that came with it, it may have helped us.
Just layman's words, yeah.
Yeah, layman's, yeah.
If I can offer one explanatory comment there, we had to prepare a formal public notification. Mass DEP has, let's call it fairly standard language, that we're allowed to edit. I mean, I theoretically, we could have come up with something else, but they get to review it and approve it, and so some of that, and I'm not criticizing Mass DEP, they're very good people, and they do, they do good work and all that, but we kind of have to work within certain parameters and boundary conditions on the notification documents, so, but I'd be more than happy to write something that is a little more in the English language, if you'd like. That's not a problem.
Thank you.
I do think we probably should send a follow-up to those families, like clarifying that it's safe to drink.
Yeah, and I think just letting the families know how often this is being monitored. You know, with the letter that went home, it's kind of like, it was a shock, but not, but if you're monitoring it on a regular basis, and it's a well, things are bound to come up. I mean, even in your home, things are bound to come up. So I think knowing how often it's being monitored in a letter, I think is more satisfying, too, with, you know, just as a parent, knowing it's being monitored. So yes, we get that letter, but it was just monitored, too, so it's being fixed, it's not just, whoa, here's, you know, an issue.
But I mean, this has been going on for years, though, so I think there is also a sense of, like, they're desensitized, too, of like, oh, there's a water issue. But I remember you doing a presentation at the town meeting, and town Buddhist Lucca meeting, you know, several years back, and again, I heard that the monitoring was unbelievable, it was awesome. But I do think that, I think there's some desensitizing, and people say, oh, there's a water issue, you know, and, you know, and I'm surprised, like, how much use does it get on a good month? You know, we still offer bottled water, or the other water, all the time, right? Is that, yeah. I mean, I think we said, I mean, this is monitored better than, you know, most things, most things, you know, in life.
If I can add to that, the remote monitoring system, there's a lot of instrumentation in that treatment system, supply and treatment system, and there's a lot of monitoring going on. And this is not, I'm not blowing smoke here, this is serious. You have a monitoring system that is the equivalent of what the largest public water treatment systems in the state and in the country have. That's the level of monitoring you have, and it's automated, and it's 24/7/365, and we've got, you know, I've got a piece of a pretty good-sized server and programming, not just data logging, but analyzing and doing trend analysis and spitting out graphs and charts, you know, every day. It's a very substantial and sophisticated monitoring program. And again, we'd gone to the school and the town, they said, yep, that's what we want you to do, and it was felt that that was appropriate to give the community the assurance that everything that was being done to ensure high-quality water and protect the health of the staff and students and visitors to the school was being done. And so we're trying to, we are trying to accomplish that.
We appreciate it.
So I have a few questions. You mentioned, well, first, I have a question about the notice that was sent home. It came home about a week and a half ago, but these tests were from February, so I'm just curious as to why there was a delay, and I'm assuming you've reported to Millville, and they report to us? Is that an incorrect assumption?
What happens is, in February, we had that, those high values occur on one sampling event, but the state looks at a four-quarter rolling average, and so what was interesting is that the, even with that one high value, the total trihalomethanes were still in compliance, but that, but the value on the halocytic acids was high enough that it skewed the four-quarter average. But what they, what is required by, the regulatory requirement is, you go back and resample, okay? So we went back, well, we took some corrective action first, and then, that was the first priority, and then we resampled. When we resampled, what happened is, the total trihalomethanes were fine, the halocytic acids, it was just barely over the limit, so our four-quarter rolling average was still just a hair high, okay? At that point, is when we have to, we have to then get into the evaluation and then provide the public notice, okay? Our, now, we were in very frequent communication with Mass DEP, we were in fairly frequent communication with the town and with the school committee, you know, through Alan's office. What's transpiring there is, we knew we were already back in compliance, but we still have to go through the steps of the reporting, the follow-up analysis, the evaluation of the problem, and then go through ultimately the public notice, okay? So there was, we were required, if I recall correctly, to get the public notice out by, I believe it was May 15th, and I think it was May 9th, or?
It's about, it was about a week ago.
Maybe the 6th, I forget the exact day, but it was maybe the 5th or the 6th we got the public notice out, okay? At the time the public notice went out, the system was back in compliance, but we still have to do the public notice.
So what you're telling me is, it wasn't this one test on February 10th that actually triggered anything, it was the average of the four quarters?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
I understand. My next question, and tell me, and if this is out of your area, all you have to do is say that it's not, you said you brought the, it's a 10,000-gallon tank, it's down to 5,000 gallons right now?
That's what the, that's what the control elevation is in the tank, as far as how much water we can, we'll fill it to 5,000, and then the well pump turns off. And then it'll drop to 4,000, the well pump will turn on, until it brings it back up to 5,000 gallons.
And then going backwards, you mentioned, years ago, they had, they had a problem with the fire suppression system and the pipes being clogged. Is that tank supplying the fire system?
No.
So that's a separate?
This, this tank, which was, this 10,000-gallon tank, which was installed in 2010, was to separate the public water system from the fire protection system. Prior to that, there was, there's a, I believe, a 60,000-gallon tank, above-ground storage tank, out, let's call it, in the rear of the school.
So that's separate.
That's still there, and that provides the fire, fire-water service to the school, to the fire pump inside the school.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Well, thank you for being so open about that, and thank you for the invitation for more information. We will certainly reach out to you if we have any other questions.
Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you very much, Bob. Moving along, next on my report is the vote to approve the 16, 17 draft school calendar. And while draft may seem to be semantics, the reason why it is a draft is because legally and technically, we are in negotiations, and so we do not have the ability to officially call this a calendar until the negotiations are completed and the agreement is ratified. So, but we do have a memorandum of understanding with the, with both parties, so that we can put this out, because families, students, staff, all want to know dates going forward for planning purposes. So before you is the draft school calendar for next year. It looks very similar to where we have been over the past several years. One change is the Tuesday before Labor Day start, and that will be, hopefully, the start date in the future, so that all staff would report on August 30th, Tuesday, with all students reporting on August 31st, keeping the long holiday weekend, Friday around Labor Day. And then, as you can see, the rest of the schedule follows with the Christmas, February, and April vacation weeks still intact. And next, next year, you can see that Good Friday leads off the April break, so we may use that prior Thursday as professional development. However, that, this is the draft calendar, and it's also encouraging to point out that the last day without snow will be Friday, June 16th, which is always nice to be able to report. So that's the calendar as it stands. We believe that we are moving through the process, but we still want to follow Mass General laws and call it a draft.
So you're looking for a motion to approve the draft, correct?
Yes.
So moved.
Motion made by Wendy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Steve, any discussion?
Is there any room for discussion on the April 13th? Because that's a long time out of school.
Yes, there is, we were looking at, the genesis of that was looking at protecting the test window and protecting the instructional time. So there wasn't, there wasn't really unanimous thought as to what's the perfect day for that final professional development day, and Dr. Thompson may, may recommend a different day based upon mutual ability to work with other towns. So for now, that's the placeholder. So for now, that's the placeholder.
Was it originally in January? That, that one was right followed Martin Luther King?
Yes, that was exactly where it was.
Well, the...
It was one in March this past year.
Yeah, this year we had a January and a March. Uh, next year, the, um, co, the collaborative day with Blackstone Valley, uh, other schools in the Blackstone Valley is actually Election Day, November 8th. Uh, that's why that date is, is in there. October 7th gives us a nice early date to, uh, put in motions, some, uh, some initiatives for next year. Um, and that third date, we're looking to try to avoid the test window. And as the point of discussion, um, we'd like to try to push it off a little bit further, but we're not completely sure what the test window is going to be, although I think they just published the test dates for next year last week. So we might, that 13th...
This is a draft?
This, right.
This is a draft, so if you have those dates and there's something that works...
The only, the only date that still might be in flux would be the 13th of April, but that's, you know, I mean, there's pros and cons, you know? Get it out there in front. You already have a pretty long break with Good Friday on the 14th? Or do you disrupt another?
And this is not really a surprise, and it's not really saying anything out of school, but our goal is to get as many days in before the tests as possible. So people say, why are you starting so early? We want to get in days before any of the state testing. The more days we get ahead of that, the better.
Right. And, and, and this year, we did start on Mondays, September 1st, um, and had students in school on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. So this is actually a day later. We would have staff in school on, on the 30th and students on the 31st. They'd come, uh, Wednesday and Thursday. Friday is a holiday for all. Still a four day weekend for Labor Day.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Thank you very much, and we will continue to follow that calendar. Uh, next on the, um, report is the, uh, vote to approve school choice, uh, for next year, the 1617 school year. Um, districts have to report to the Department of Education, uh, by June 1st, what they are, are going to offer if they want to get involved in the school choice program. And we are, um, we have space. It's many districts will articulate just certain grade levels and certain seats per grade level, but we have space and we welcome, uh, students across all grades, um, who choice in. This year, uh, I believe it was 43 students who choice into us. And, uh, as we have said before, the goal is to reduce the number of students who choice out and to increase the choicing in. But it is a, a great opportunity, and as you can see, the, uh, the motion, uh, the recommendation would be to continue to accept school choice students in all grade levels subject to class size limitations. And the motion before is to approve the participation of the Blackstone Millville Regional School District in the school choice program for the 1617 school year at all grade levels subject to class size limitations. And that has been standard language that the, the committee has adopted in past years.
Okay, so we're looking for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Motion made by Jane, second by Wendy, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Unanimous, thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, next is the tentative dates for the school committee, uh, to meet, uh, next year. Um, and I believe that, um, Mrs. Vannaco has done an artful job here of looking at the fall, which tends to get chopped up because of holidays. And so, uh, for October, November, December, to be able to have enough working meetings, we move to the 1st and the 3rd, um, for those three months, keeping July and August as single dates. Um, the July 11th, we really do need to meet by statute so that we can approve the closeout for fiscal 16. Um, it's funny how it, it seems to be the same date in both of those months.
But is there any movement on that? I did actually ask Bridgette to talk to you about that. We have to, it has to be by the 15th, but...
Right. I mean, you can certainly meet the 13th or 14th. I would just come back from the conference, which I think I did one year. I mean, the...
I don't know what the committee's...
Yeah, I mean, the, the Monday, the, the business office will have all of their documentation completed by Friday, the 8th. So, um, it certainly...
Any opinions on that?
I will just let you know that I won't be here no matter, if it's that week, I won't be here that week. So as long as there are other people here.
I, I wasn't here last year, so. Um, all right. And this is, this is not something we actually have to vote on, this is just...
Just for information for the committee for tentative dates.
So there is an extra meeting in here, just, if you all recall, we usually only meet once in November. Um, and it was just moved up to every other week from, and it, and it let us fit in an extra meeting, which I think we...
It flows, it flows well, yes.
Okay, so that's...
Very good. Thank you. Um, we're also, um, finally negotiating our health insurance renewal, um, with Blue Cross Blue Shield and the Mass Interlocal Insurance Association, affectionately known as MIA. And, um, we did have an information session this week for, uh, folks to, um, hear from representatives from both organizations. And in front of, in the packet, you have, um, the two plans that are being offered. The one that continues what we have, um, with some small changes around co-pay for the office visits as well as the RX with another tier, um, allows the renewal rate to be at 5.8%, which is a far different rate than the 12.8 that was actuarially calculated for us. They have also added a limited network plan, which would allow folks to, um, that use three central mass hospitals, Milford, St. Vincent's, and UMass Medical, to really, uh, only have a 1.8% increase. Um, with, the key is the out-of-pocket maximums will stay the same. There are some changes, and we had, um, I guess you could say a lively discussion with, um, employees about some of the changes. And unfortunately, you can't tailor a plan to please everybody as a group because we ensure as an entity, we do our best, along with the Insurance Advisory Committee, to come up with the proper, um, plan that, that makes the best, um, in efficiency and affordability. So that is why they, we have added that second plan. And then you have the PPOs, uh, that are offered, uh, as well, and that came in at a 7.16%. Again, keeping the out-of-pocket maximum the same. We are going to have, um, open enrollment, May 26th, uh, a couple of weeks from now, and, and in the high school cafeteria for, and everyone to come and learn about their options. And, um, because we have to have this done by, I believe, June 13th to allow for, um, all of the changes to be made if folks do want to avail themselves of any of the changes. We are also going to offer flexible spending accounts, which will help to defray, uh, some of this by allowing folks to, uh, use pre-tax dollars. And it, it works very well. It does take a bit of planning for, um, our retirees and our employees, I'm sorry, just our employees because it's a payroll deducted. To be able to plan, you can, you can set aside $2,500 per year, but if you don't use it, you lose it. And so you really want to make sure that you're anticipating what your covered costs can be. It's loaded on a, a debit card, and the dollars are there if there is a hospitalization in the beginning of the year. You have full use of your leverage of your pre-tax dollars, and then it's payroll deducted across, uh, the year. Those typically run October 1 to September 30 because it allows the payroll deduction to catch up, um, with that. But that's a terrific benefit that we are adding at very minimal administrative cost to the district. But it does give, um, our employees another tool in, um, in managing their tax bill, so.
The, um, current enrollment numbers that are on here for the custom network, that's not in place yet.
Yeah, that's not in place.
So these numbers are not accurate.
I think that just duplicates unfortunately by the other one.
So once open enrollment happens, we'll know?
Yes, we'll have the updated, uh, list of, of, if, if people do migrate to that, certainly folks who, um, have doctors in those networks who are fairly healthy would probably be candidates for that, that lower, uh, increase.
What was it, what were the three?
Um, I believe they're Milford Hospital, St. Vincent's in Worcester, and UMass Medical in Worcester.
It actually goes just to the outskirts of Boston. Some of your bigger Boston hospitals are not, but some are. So there is a list.
Yeah, and as I, as I...
Like Brigham and Women's is not, right.
But, and as I mentioned to folks, um, was it yesterday? I think it was yesterday. Um, the importance to note is that health insurance is guiding, is getting very complex, and, uh, not just because of the Affordable Care Act, but because of, um, many pressures on it. We continue to purchase health insurance far different than our car insurance or our homeowner's insurance. You know, I use the analogy that when your car insurance doesn't cover oil changes and tires, and your homeowner's insurance does not cover painting your house. And yet, we expect our health insurance to cover every penny and are not happy when it doesn't. So there's a cost for that. And similarly, when you look at your car insurance claims and, and you have a bad year with accidents, your insurance rates don't go down. And, and no different with homeowner's claims. Uh, your rates don't decrease because you've used your insurance. And, and I think that's what folks need to know as they make their plans, um, in terms of what network or programs they want to see. And for those who want to tailor it to themselves, um, Mass Healthcare Connector offers that flexibility. And so there are a lot of ways to attack it, but as part of a group, uh, as part of an entity, um, we do feel that we do leverage, and we heard from the MIA representatives, we do leverage, um, the value of Blue Cross Blue Shield. We just don't like it when we see double-digit increases. But those are merely a function of the usage. We are using our insurance more and deeper than ever before. Not just retirees, not just large claims, but across the entire population who uses this as a benefit. So it is a challenge, and as we heard from the MIA folks, it will continue to be a challenge because on their two-year look back, our actuarial numbers are not favorable for reducing rates. So we have to seriously look each year at plan design and at what adjustments can be made to offset increased renewal rates as opposed to weighing out-of-pocket costs for folks. So it's, it's not an easy task.
My concern is that when MIA was with us, they told us to budget 10% a year, and we can't, we can't do that.
Mrs. Cobb's concern as well.
Okay.
Yes.
I, I don't know what the answer is, but when the towns are screaming at us that we can't increase our budget over, well, 1%? 2 and 1/2% is, you know, the, I, I don't know how they can even...
Yeah. No, exactly. It's, it's not easy. And we'll get as much information out to folks, um, and, and help them by putting them in touch with our consultants and our professionals to really understand what's best for their particular situations. Which is a, a nice segue into the FY17 budget update. We had, um, the Millville Town Meeting this past Monday. We have Blackstone's Town Meeting coming up on the 31st. The Senate's, uh, budget is due out, uh, I believe on Tuesday, and that will give us some more, um, of the latest numbers. Senate numbers typically rise over the previous two passes from the governor and from the House, and we hope that that will be the case because we are in a very challenging time as we go forward. And, um, our goal is to preserve what we have and to improve, to maybe turn those choice numbers around, and to continue to be competitive with all of the options our students have before them. So, um, we'll look at those numbers when they come out Tuesday. We will continue to work through the budget, and, uh, we look for, um, community support as we move forward, and we'll have more details, um, at the next meeting. I know all of us have been meeting quite a bit the last few weeks, so there's, um, I'm not sure if it's that we're really smart or there's a little fatigue, but maybe a bit of both. I have some very pleasant, happy, proud news for, for, to share with everybody watching. This has been a really, really, really exceptional year for some of the folks that work and, and, and teach your students and, and take care of our kids and, and keep them healthy. And, um, we, we've already heard and seen that, uh, Dr. Bosfert, our preschool teacher, Ms. B. at Millville, um, was the CEC's Teacher of the Year, and got to go to the White House with all of the National Teachers of the Years, um, last Tuesday, a week ago. And, um, Jean Sheridan is the State Food Service Director, but also the Northeast Regional Food Service Director. She's one of five recognized at that level. Uh, Dave Eisenberg, who is just amazing, um, and, and who gives, um, whole new meaning that you don't have to teach just math or science or ELA to impact students' ability to learn. And, and when you watch what he does in, in his phys ed and health and P E and devotion to keeping kids healthy, it is amazing. And he was one of 10 who got honored, um, by shape and went to the conference in Minneapolis. And it continues because if I could ask Mr. Cameron to take a seat up front, I know most everyone knows this by now, but, um, I asked Mr. Cameron to come in, um, because I don't have a large cash award to give him, nor my vacation home for the week. But I, I did want to recognize Justin because he is the recipient of the Massachusetts School Secondary Association, Administrators Association's Middle School Principal of the Year for Massachusetts. And that is a high honor to be nominated, and it is an incredible honor to be picked. And, um, we just found out, and, and I'm, I'm going to let Dave speak as well as an experienced former middle school principal of the year, to what Justin has to look forward to. And it's amazing because they also pick a high school principal of the year, and only one of them gets to go to Washington in September, uh, to be a part of the NASSP. And Justin has been picked as the Massachusetts representative, and he has also been placed automatically in nomination for the National Principal of the Year. And, uh, this is pretty amazing. I, I got to meet... I got to meet with the students at Millville because we had, like, some, the lunch lady's superhero, the super lunch lady's, uh, award in Millville, and I got to speak to all of the students. And I said, this is pretty cool that, uh, we are a very small district, but we are very powerful in what we do. And, and certainly Mr. Cameron's, uh, dedication around the clock to each and every one of his students, to each and every one of his parents, to each and every one of his faculty and staff shows through, and it, it's a testament to his work. That he has been recognized by his, his peers as well as, um, this group that, that governs and provides such great associations for our secondary principals. And so it is, it is a proud moment. Uh, he did find out, I believe, in the delivery room, um, watching his second daughter be born, that...
It wasn't that dramatic.
Oh, okay. Well, I didn't want you to break your...
Bad days of our lives, Alan. It was not inactive delivery. I was in the delivery room.
But it was the same day, I believe I had that right.
I was in the delivery room, but she was not inactive labor. I would not have answered my phone.
Did you tell her that or you?
She told me it better be good news.
So it was quite a week for, uh, for Justin, and, um, congratulations on, on all of those. But we could not be prouder of your work. We couldn't be prouder to have you, um, in our educational community recognized for this type of work. It is truly, um, amazing that we have this kind of recognition. And I just, you know, in the two short years that I have spent, um, watching Justin, I, I really truly, you know, am just so impressed with everything that I hear from families, parents, staff. There's a, there's school committee members... There's school committee members. There's a consistency of professionalism that runs through everything he does. And as the superintendent, I just want to say thank you, congratulations, and the gift is on the way.
I thought that was a vacation.
I don't know if Dr. Thompson wants to say anything at all because Dave is uniquely qualified to comment.
2010?
Yes, 2010, but I also sat on the board of NASSP for four years as well. So this is, this is a very big deal, and it's even bigger because what has happened is that, once upon a time, they sent both middle school and high school principals to DC, and now states have to choose one of, one of two candidates to go to DC. And I know Justin and I had this, had this conversation a couple days ago, and he's a pretty modest guy, but, you know, the person that he was chosen over to go to DC was, is also an incredible principal, very involved with the association as well. So to be chosen by the state association to represent the state of Massachusetts in the national competition, we won't call it a beauty contest, but is quite a big deal. And we had conversations during the application process, and once again, his modesty comes through, "I don't know, I don't know, I don't know," but, you know, I had to have serious conversations with him about the incredible things that he is doing here at Hartnett Middle School and how the culture of this school is just second to none. And the way he works with the faculty here, the shared leadership, the buy-in that he has here really sets him apart. And I'm very confident that he will be a very serious candidate in that. Of course, I might call a couple of my friends to make sure they take care of him while he's there as well. But he's in for a whirlwind tour all the way. He will be in Senate and congressional offices, wearing a funky medal. You can try mine on, see how it fits if you want before you go, but you'll be up there representing principals and principal leadership and advocating for education nationally. You will have some fun, and I think one of the best experiences you will have is you will spend three days with some of the best principals in the entire country. And you will have an institute and a professional development opportunity that is, that is second to none. He told me where he was staying. I looked it up. He's right across the Potomac from Georgetown, so we'll talk about how your lovely wife can walk around Georgetown and make you really nervous while you're in workshops. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I only had one more item on my report. I'm glad you're here, Justin, because it prompted me to remember that you've only been asking me to do this for a couple of meetings. And that is that, and I'll let, I'll let you fill in the details, but the, I believe it's the middle school PTO has raised funds to put a marquee, much like most schools have as you drive around both our district and others, and this is a rendition of it. And the timeline, the cost, the maintenance, and all of that, sorry to put you to work, but I just figured you could fill us in far better than I.
Sure.
Is this at the end of the driveway?
Yep.
I'm hopeful.
Yeah, that's what you had sent me three months, not three weeks ago.
So if you take a look at the cover, what's missing that could probably give you a sense of orientation is the stone sign is here.
Okay.
Okay, so this is a common turnaround area for traffic, which is why you would have kind of a bumper that would be here. Now, the only thing that's still, I think, in active discussion is what this kind of bumper area or island is going to be made of, because there is some concern.
Not this very shiny.
There is some concern that the wood, you know, might quickly rot or, you know, whatever.
Just doesn't go with that.
Is this going to be farther down the hill from like the traffic island? It's going to be beyond that?
Yeah.
Yeah, so again, the stone sign is here. I don't know how well you can see me. And then, you know, the, the middle portion is, ends like here. So there's no perfect spot, you know? I have to be honest with all of you, as the PTO and I have taken many walks down to this area. You know, this is a sign that would be seen from traffic in both directions, which is important for a marquee sign like this. And this is, I think, the only spot that will get the most eyes on it. Hopefully, eyes that aren't driving 45 miles an hour.
They've already raised all of the money for this?
Yes, the entire project has been, I think, voted upon.
Yep.
And approved from the PTO. So, you know, we're not here looking for any money.
And that was an amazing price, too. I think it was like something over eight or 10,000.
Yeah, I think it was close to eight for the one that we had.
Under four for this one, so, yeah.
And I believe, and I believe you're just looking for an official vote of approval from the committee to go ahead with the project.
Motion made by Jane, second by Wendy. Any discussion?
Justin was just thinking, and this is fabulous and all, what would like an electronic one that you could sort of change remotely cost, just to ballpark?
A lot more.
I didn't even, didn't even bring it to PTO, but you know, you know me well. I already looked into one that's neon signs.
I expected that. And you could do it from your house. There's no date today, sorry. See you Monday.
I know when we looked at the one at the elementary school, adding even just something simple as electricity for a night that was, I mean, between permits and all kinds of other things that you have to get involved with, it's a little more complicated and a lot more money.
I think this base was kind of, we talked about like an island, like maybe like some plants and stuff in it, too. So it's, you know, a decent, it's not.
And it gets it off, it gets it off the pavement as well in case there is a car that, you know, and a wheel that bumps it. Hopefully, it's not bumping the sign, bumping the island.
Is there enough room for a car to go around it the way, or is it?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I don't think so.
Good. Does Noah cut any corners?
Not on four wheels. Two wheels.
The only way that would be possible is if we moved it closer to the road, which we don't want to do here.
Yeah, too close is bad, too.
Any other discussion? Questions? All those in favor? All right, any opposed?
Had the superintendent put this on the agenda a few months ago, like I asked. It would be up right now saying, "Congratulations, Mr. Cameron." It's hard to give that to you.
All those nice things I said. Duly noted.
I think we have to, the first message would be, "Congratulations, PTO, for funding such a wonderful project."
But definitely, congratulations, Mr. Cameron, on Principal of the Year and on your new addition to your family, because that is always exciting.
My youngest doesn't know me before that, so.
This is true.
He was welcome to the world, so it was an exciting day. I had to apologize for the phone call because it was a yes, yes, thank you kind of phone call that I took. And then the next day, I said, you know, I might have seemed kind of underwhelmed. Here's the reason.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you. So that completes your.
That completes my report. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I would just like to say to Mr. Cameron, if he wants to use my vacation home, you can have that. It is, it is a tent, though. Just so you know, okay?
I appreciate it.
No problem.
Now, moving on to the report of the Assistant Superintendent.
No problem. We've done that, we've done that before. Oh, my report?
That's yours.
All right, so just quickly, just wanted to remind you folks that we were doing or are doing pilots this spring, the STARS Assessment Pilot, as well as the Middle School Math Pilot. Both are starting, we're kind of, you know, we started or started to start and, you know, had to kind of pause because of park testing, so we're at a slowdown point, but do intend to pick both of those up full speed after next week. STARS was piloted fully here at the middle school. They were already geared up, so they get to play with all the extra bells and whistles that they did not have this year with their pilot. Elementary schools have started and are setting up, and the high school as well. Middle School Math Pilot, if you remember in the budget, is to bring a new math program into sixth grade next year and then the year after that, seventh and eighth, and roll it up through. We are piloting in all three grades to get all three grades opinions on which program to go with. We are, I know you're shocked by this, but we're using two well-tested and respected math programs. One is GoMath, which was developed by two members of the NCTM Board, running their own company out of Pennsylvania, and it is published by Houghton Mifflin, but not made by Houghton Mifflin. The other is Envision Math, which is the same program we have at the elementary school, Envision 2.0, and they have just revamped their middle school program. So we will be trying both of those. The challenge with the Envision is that it's not all printed yet, so we only have a few units to try out, but we will get to those this spring. So that's the update from here.
All right, any questions for Dr. Thompson? Thank you very much. Onto public forum. And school committee forum. We'll start. Bill?
I'm good.
I would like to thank again Griffin and Eric May. It was a pleasure having representatives for two years, because I think it was a nice perspective for us. I would like to briefly comment on the Millville Town Meeting. While it was disappointing from a school committee membership, particularly as it pertains to the budget, I do think we need those dollars. They're not just lofty expectations. We really need them. And so that was disappointing. What wasn't disappointing was the turnout that was there that night. I think when people feel passionately about something, whether they agree with me or not, I think it's a good thing that they're there and that they were able to express their opinions and give us some feedback. And we know we've got a tough road ahead of us, and that's okay.
I also want to say thanks to Eric and Griffin, and I want to welcome Brittany and Jack.
I have nothing. One of the ropes.
I'd just like to thank and congratulate the Goddette family for the May 1 Cory's Crusade Race at BMR, what, a week and a half ago, I guess it was? They had over 400 runners and walkers, and it was a great event. It's the fourth annual, and it gets bigger and bigger every year. They do an unbelievable job, they really do. And they gave out two scholarships at the race, and they're going to have another couple of scholarships at the senior awards night. And they just do a fantastic job because it gets bigger and bigger and more and more people. Sometimes these things kind of peter out after a while, but this thing's getting bigger and stronger. And that's for their son Cory, who passed away a few years ago, about a month after he graduated from BMR. That was a, that was a great, it was a great event. Similar to what Jane is saying, I was really disappointed with the whole meeting and how the whole evening went in Millville this past Monday. You know, I was kind of disappointed with the FinCom and the Board of Selectmen. I was disappointed how the, the go-to phrase seemed to be "secret ballot" for everything. I think that was because some people didn't want to go on record as to what their vote was, but I was pretty clear about what my vote would be. Looking forward to the Blackstone Meeting. Maybe we can get some traction there and move forward.
I want to bring up the town hall comments that were made a few times. I heard it at a Millville Board of Selectmen meeting on the town floor, it was mentioned, and recently when I was at the Millville Town Hall, how it's in, you know, rough shape, and comments were made about using Millville Elementary School for those offices. So I just want to confirm that that, well, not even confirm, ask, clear up, that that is not an option based on our lease of that property.
Based upon mass general laws, as well as the lease that the school committee in 2012 signed with the town, there does not seem to be any option for subletting, if you will. We are waiting for an official opinion from our attorney, but based upon those first two factors, that doesn't seem to be any, any grounds for further discussion.
Thank you. So you did pass on the lease to our attorney and ask them that specifically?
And then back to the regional agreement. Clearly, it did not pass with Millville voters. Blackstone voters still have the option. It's on their warrant still. You know, just let us know, I guess. Go out and vote, so that way, you know, the school committee knows if you, if it's worth continuing to pursue. And I guess if it is, we'll have to decide on getting committees together to have a new group propose something.
Thank you. Wendy?
I just want to comment on the regional agreement real quick and short and sweet. I want to personally thank everybody who did go on the committee for the last two years and who did push out the information. And I also want to apologize to the people who consistently were spoken to disrespectfully in whether it's through social media and whether it's through, you know, verbally. I just don't, I don't think it's respectful, and I just want to personally thank everybody on the committee. I think, I think you all work hard, and, you know, the amount of time that went into it, I'm completely for agreeing or disagreeing, but respectfully. And I'm, it's really hurtful to know that the things that went on, whether it's through social media or whether it's through, you know, in passing, you know, I want to thank the people who respectfully disagreed, but I do want to thank everybody who was on that committee and worked really hard because I don't think it was fair the way, you know, some of us were treated. But I do want to just personally thank you for all the work that you did and all the information that was put out. And not only the people on the committee, but, you know, there were people that were trying to get information out the best that we could, and I think they need, they need to be thanked as well. So more of a positive note, I just want to make sure everybody knows that, you know, we're thankful for the work that they did. That's all I'm going to say.
Thank you. I want to, I know, Joanne, this isn't your very first meeting, but I want to publicly welcome you. It's, you know, a journey to be had, but we're very glad that you stepped up. And this is your second meeting, but our first meeting was not here, and it was, you know, so if you need anything, we're all here for you, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you. Looking forward to it, too.
As a committee. And that's all I want to think. And our next meeting is actually next Thursday. Do we want to keep that budget? It's a budget workshop. We have Blackstone FinCom Open Hearing on Monday. Anyone that is available, is at what time? I'm sorry.
I believe that starts at 6:00.
6:00 PM for the open hearing?
Yes, and then I believe the official open would be at 7:00.
Yeah, I've seen quite a few comments on social media about, you know, welcoming people there and a lot of support for us, so I think it's important that we show them, you know, how much we need their support. So 6:00 PM at the Blackstone Town Hall is that. And then, so when, Thursday, we have the budget workshop set up just for strategic talking, I guess. That can be moved or changed if we need to. Our next public meeting is the following Thursday, May 26, and the Blackstone Town Meeting is the Tuesday after Memorial Day, so May 31 at the Blackstone Millville High School. We definitely need Blackstone's support for our budget and tact. And we will be adjourning to go to executive session for union contract conversation, and we will not be returning for any public session. So we'll adjourn from there. Need a roll call vote to go. Joanne?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
Erin, yes.
What if I said no?
You don't have to go. We have a courtroom, sorry.
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
JoJo, thank you.